One is Thursday.
It's six o'clock, I'm gonna call the County Commission to meeting to order August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Hank, can you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, let's pray. Your Lord, thanks for all these brought together here tonight, and just thank the leaders so safely, just care some. And saying, we ask now that you come into this meeting, just be with everything that's said and all decisions that are made, they might be pleasing to you, just know it right. Amen. Congratulations.
To the land, and to the state of America, to the government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and living in justice.
Next item is public comments, I don't have any here, so I'm saying we don't have any, and we'll move on fast. Next item is minutes approval of July thirteenth and July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Van. Second, second from Ricky. Discussion. All favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Uh, move down to the next one, financials of approved payments with deals.
You want to make a motion?
I have a motion by Ricky.
I'll say it.
Second by Van, being discussion. All favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Uh, bids and requests for proposal. Approved or denied to advertise for a brush cutter. Y'all made a situation we've been, we've got a brush cutter that's been down for some time. Knew it was gonna be well over the ten thousand, probably somewhere in the eighty, ninety thousand, so.
That's what I said?
Yeah.
Just for a cutter?
That's just for a cutter. So, y'all want to, either we can look at it two different ways, we can look at a tractor and a cutter. Maybe trade in that cutter that we got for whatever few dollars it worth, and keep him tracked it for the truck that we have for a backup tractor, or we could just trade it all in. And/or, I think we actually need two. So, my suggestion would be to fix the one we have, if we can fix the principal, and to get bids on another one, where we could have two of them, because we, we just cannot keep those.
And the pump, you said, did I think, is it just a pump on the cutter or a pump on the tractor?
No, it's just, it's totally related to the cutter, nothing wrong with the tractor.
I think they'll fix that cutter, try to give us another, another tractor and cutter. We'll be getting, we'll be needing two of them, ain't no doubt, need two of them, one way or the other.
Alright, so I would need a motion to fix the existing cutter, brush cutter. And if it's feasible, if it's what they were telling us today, it looks like it's gonna be around nine or ten thousand dollars, now long as it don't go over twenty, I think it should be good. And advertise the bids on another.
Brush cutter and cutter?
Brush cutter and cutter.
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion by Van.
I'll do it, second.
Got a second, Paul Ricky, is there any more discussion on this matter?
Here, first thing. We need it, I mean.
I was asking the road department.
Yeah, that one ain't gonna, ain't gonna take care of this whole county.
We done seen that, and we're running it every day, I mean, we, since we've had it, we put up six thousand hours on it.
Ain't had it for a year, Paul.
It ain't, it ain't, ain't even caught up yet, you know, ain't, ain't.
But they've been running, they've been running.
Six thousand hours, a lot of hours, on people, quick, but I mean, we just ain't, we ain't getting enough cut, so.
I just wanna check the cutter, see what it takes to be, to be.
I'll make a motion, second. Is there any more discussion on that?
I will say that we do not necessarily have a dedicated staff person to run two of the cutters, I mean, when we get off days, when they're not working on other pieces of equipment, we can project something. But at this point in time, we just don't want the staff to run both of them constantly.
We walk around that one, get trapped.
Yeah, it may take six months to get trapped. Right now, the way things going, I'd take the year out, Ron.
Yeah.
Just pick up one, where you want to advertise it?
Uh, that's one thing we do need to talk about, we need to do more advertising than just give them pleasure, and uh, we definitely need to do some of these, at least some of these surrounding counties, and we need uh, are we doing on government bids now?
Uh, we have those recruitment networks.
Yeah.
Let's do that, thank you, we're just gonna go around some of the, we know what we got. Ricky, do you know what, that old cutter, do you remember the old one we had?
Yeah.
Oh, we got this, what was it? Do you know the name brand it?
The Com or something?
Uh, know what I'm saying? That thing run for about ten year, it was on a Ford tractor, a loader.
Yeah, it was a commercial, a piece of whip that was a tractor.
No, it was, it was hooked to a Ford tractor, not an old side cutter, I ain't talking about that one.
Oh, yeah, that was old, uh.
It was a side cutter, set on Ford tractors, just like, just like the one we got.
Woodsmoor.
Had a Woodsmoor.
I love that stuff.
You know that, I know the one you talking about, Ricky, that was a set on the, that was set on the front end loader. But we had one before then, Donald Hunter got that thing.
A little Ford tractor.
But it was a cutter, I don't know what the name brand, it was Bucked, probably, tell you.
And we need to price it, price all of them.
So, don't forget, let's not get old for the woods, you got an old line tractor, that's all. They done bought one, got one of that.
They didn't have a cab or nothing.
No, we didn't have a cab, okay. So, we booked it, did that?
We got, we got, we ain't, we ain't booked it yet, is there any more discussion on the matter?
Well, we got a little more advertising.
At least this around the county, every, every county touches us, and uh, I would even reach out to some of these bigger companies, and that may not seem to be a, uh, a gift.
Well, we have a running list of companies that have submitted bids in the past, so we can say.
Let's just make sure they all know about it, because people don't know, everybody would read the ledger. So, y'all give that, he's gonna make a call, everybody needs to know about it, we're gonna run it for ledger, we're gonna run it in some surrounding counties newspaper, and we're gonna run it on the.
What's your, your?
I'll give that. So, I have a motion by Ricky, and a second by Van, is there any more discussion? Oh, a motion by Van, a second by Ricky, is there any more discussion? Alright, I'll call for a vote, everybody favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now. Open sealed bid for Pellet Mill Road.
They were requesting submit to companies?
Ever, Dyke Drive Company.
And their total bids?
Hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand?
Yep.
And that was ever?
Yep.
Alright, same with you guys.
Well, this was fifty-eight thousand, we got a whole.
Erasing.
Jay Hires.
Jay Hires, yeah.
How much was it?
Fifty-eight, three quarters. Who did, it's fixed, but we know they quoted the same thing. We typed them up in our office, Robert Lewis worked on it beforehand, and Judge Jay Hires worked with Robert, doing those things together. We reached a consensus with.
State, General State. The State didn't speak.
So, we know they quoted the same thing.
Yeah.
That makes my big decision, doesn't it?
Area one, oh, this is thirty-six thousand, area two, sixty-two thousand, area three, forty thousand. I just wanna know what does those areas make?
So, area one was coming on to Pellet Mill Road, basically making a turn lane off of three forty-one. Area two was bonding that road, and then area three was that curb itself bonding the curb.
He just, he just.
And this, this is my view, that could, well.
It's up on the back, back here, we got a lot of dirt back here. Notice it just.
I would still like to load on it.
Well, let's do that, let Oakley confirm that he's got all three of these covered in his bids.
Right, if he does not.
For the one, I guess.
Hold it, yes, he's got it all covered.
Is he saving the cover? Is he addressing the cover?
Probably shows us there, should be that.
See this one up there? Like Oakley said, he's got to turn off, he's got to apply the cutter. Yeah, can you confirm that for me, you feel comfortable confirming that? I'll make a motion when we accept the low bid, if.
If it comply with the specs and the job that we asked.
Well, if it don't, I'd also go back to, ever back there.
Yeah, a motion by Ricky to accept the low bid of Jay Hires, of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Hank, is there any more discussion on the matter? Ricky, now I'll call for a vote, everybody favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item we have is to discuss all of your, uh, we have had the same alt in group for quite some time, however, there has been inquiries uh, asking to maybe, uh, bid on the job. So, my question to y'all is, y'all want to open up the next year's audit for bids, or y'all want to remain with the same company that we've had for, 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 for.
Since Doug used CRD, he's been with the alt.
How many years is that?
CRD, not from, I believe an exact number, I actually have to look at it.
So, about seven years. It's never eight years, I mean, and they've, and they've done us a great job, but I mean, you know, uh, we have, there's lots of people that can do it too, so. Y'all wanna open it up for bids, or y'all wanna stay where you at?
I guess my only concern, if you really want, third party all of your being, to my book. That's basically what I have.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I'm, I'm just having to ask a question, because I'll ask a question. Most people around here does use model D to hospital, and I mean, that's just a very reputable firm, but.
I mean, that's normally the reason why, you don't really, nobody, local, good. Alt.
I'm saying that, you know, there's just always, there's situations.
Okay, is it doing it now?
Well, it's.
Well, yeah.
I think, I think main offices at that, and they have offices, they get.
They're everywhere. And that's what they specify, is the county. The, the problem, all this, you know, they don't do.
Have they done the job? We didn't make a motion very much, or just?
I didn't make a motion if we wanted to, but I can, it's not, you know. That's right, if, if, if somebody don't, if y'all don't want to, if y'all deal where we at, that's what you'd like to use.
Yeah, I'm, I did ask local one to do that, but I mean, I'm fine with it.
So, it sounds like it's unanimous, certainly, this week, like it is for the time being.
It seems like they're doing a good job.
Yeah, they do, and, and the girls, they work really well with girls, and uh, right now, these uncertain times, I'm just, I won't have to agree with y'all three, I'd just rather leave it like it is.
But ain't broke, no question, you know?
Alright, we'll move on. Discuss fire department and EMA equipment.
I'm going to get straight at the chief of study, and they're happy as well. Uh, essentially, they are happy to bring in more volunteer firefighters because of COVID, that is part of the reason. If volunteer firefighters get sick and can't respond to a fire, they have to have more people to be able to do that. And so, the chief has requested ten automatic confidators, that cost fifteen thousand, three hundred total, and ten radio pagers, that cost uh, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars total, and uh, five things of turnout gear, that had a toll, I had a cost of eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars total. And y'all recommend us come out with American Rescue Plan Act funds, since it's directly tied to COVID.
What was the total?
The total, what is what, I mean, I mean.
One thousand, one.
I have to add it up, just a little bit more than that, I apologize, Hank.
We got money on our paper, or we don't?
Yes, sir, you did. It is ten, three is after that block sheet paper, in case you didn't take any of that.
The way y'all looking at it, I just want to let you know that the, the Pellet Mill Road may have been damaged today due to fire, so, but you know, we getting, bit back at us, it's cleaned up, we got a fully involved uh, tra- uh, truck that was pulling a load of logs, uh, then by the time we got there, it was fully involved, you could see it pan, so, a lot of heat, so there's probably some damage to that road.
Truck over there? Did it pull him over?
No, no, Scott, I go into the new.
Whoever drives the trucks, probably pegged on the road, so. Or on side of the truck, you know?
Uh, good tale. See the frame later, that's pretty much what.
I meant to have a report of.
Oh, they will. Oh, yeah, we got a report, and then, then sure, we got, we got, we got that information.
So, what happened on Blackson Road, when big trucks, logs, did what?
Uh, we didn't get caught that, not on the road.
If I have a Blackson Road, I say, big truck, truck drove for red, red shit out.
I think some, uh, Dr. Groper's truck, I think.
Messed up.
But I don't know who.
Uh, it drove away for red. But anyways, that one, go on, go on, so, if you've heard what I've said, y'all, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, sir, just a, just a couple of things, I'd ask for a couple more items, and then, you know, we had talked, we had spoken with AZCG, and looked at what was, uh, what is actually, these items are asked for, or they, they can be part of that, that money. Uh, the other items can, but there's, there's a way to get to that point, we're just asking for those that we know right now are able to want to be purchased out of that money.
And this is for county by, by?
Yes, for county. Uh, just to, just to let you know, uh, turnout gear, if I ordered it six months, we have a six month turnaround on turnout gear, if you order today, six months later, you'll get it, so I mean, we're, everything's a backlog. Uh, pagers, probably the same thing, uh, AEDs, I'm not sure about those, the AEDs, let me just tell you a little bit about that, we have emergency medical responders in the county, uh, we have, with, with help of, with Roger, we have now acquired a EMTV class, that we talk here, in the fire department, we'll start that class probably next month. Uh, we have twenty-seven people that are signed up for it, we can only do twenty-five, and we're working on the instructor to give us instruction on whether he'll teach twenty-five or less because of COVID. So, uh, the grant, uh, this is fully funded through a grant, that will cost a taxpayer nothing, uh, other than the fact we have to buy the books, they send us a check within two weeks, we have to pay the instructor, they send us a check within two weeks, so, we have to upfront some costs, but we can get the money back. But, the AEDs will go to the county stations on the entrance, and our first responders out in county are gonna use that. How this tied into COVID money is because, uh, a lot of times, we have to go help Roger link, and we may get out there, they may be on the coast somewhere, we get out there, and you may have a COVID patient, or any patient, that we need to put to the AED, and see if we can revive them. So, the ones that we have, uh, were bought back in two thousand and one, uh, there, there, you can't, it's hard to get parts from those, uh, the parts you can get are aftermarket, they're so hot, and there's no upgrade to them, no code call for input, or anything, it's just adult, that's it, so, we're all to make that change to, to a better monitor. And when we can, we can upgrade, and then we can get parts for them, without costing so much money.
So, did you get that total?
Twenty-nine thousand, forty dollars.
So, we definitely have money to do it, but uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion, but when we do that, we need to start gear tagging some of this money, so we don't get.
Yeah, after the law.
Cause he's saying maybe six months before we get it, and we don't think it's six months down the road, so we'll, we'll spend that.
I'll make, I'll put it on, you have to keep a report and spreadsheet with the American Rescue Plan Act, so at that point, I'll, he'll go along with y'all, but.
So, I'm gonna ask, uh, for a motion to approve or deny the request from the fire department EMA on EMA equipment.
I would prefer to approve.
Got a motion from Van to approve.
Second.
Got a second from Hank, is there any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries now.
One last thing.
Thursday night, are we gonna get them?
Sir. No, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we have that, uh, the, the work section that we have with Southern Cooten, we have a branch station, we're gonna go over the E L A briefing, uh, we're gonna feed y'all, just, uh, wanna remind you about that, and I appreciate the ones that have already committed to be there, so.
It's Thursday night.
Five thirty.
Still half an hour.
I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding.
I'll retract that, and let her take it.
I'm just playing.
But that's it, thank you.
Okay, so we move down now to projects, discuss Burke, Ferry, and Landy.
Yes, sir, this is what y'all wanted to table from last meeting, uh, I was having to get with Jeff Bishop, who's in charge of the program, and to talk a little bit more about it. Uh, if you flip the tab four, there's just a little top-up of some of the questions y'all had, uh, one of the bigger ones, what super forms the maintenance, what kind of maintenance is covered, uh, DNR will accept the present condition of the site, they'll keep it in good order and repair it in a similar way that they do all their other sites on the state. DNR will be responsible for any needed repairs to program or signage that may exist, DNR will inspect the site and ensure compliance. Uh, the county, however, will provide periodic inspections, traction, litter removal, parking area upgrading if needed, and other routine maintenance, including the not letting grass kind of removal still from the ramp, this is something we're already doing. The county will continue to maintain the road to the ramp, which we're already doing, since it's a county road, and DNR will do all concrete work and initial parking area work. As far as students liable for issues and accidents, state law protects DNR, and if we enter this lease with DNR, the county will also be protected under state law. And what does DNR plan to do with the site, they'll have legal access to the site starting immediately, as soon as the documents are signed and executed. Uh, they plan to begin work no sooner than the summer of twenty twenty-two, they'll completely replace the boat ground, or either greatly repair it, remove the huge chunks of concrete, and replace the chunks of concrete out. The parking area will be properly graded and covered with crushed stone, and signs will be installed, and ADA, American with disabilities ag parking space will be made along with sidewalk, meeting those same ADA standards, which will connect that parking space to the boat ground, and additional activities will include repair maintenance and inspections. So, that was some of the questions that y'all had, that's what Jeff Bishop sent me. On that next page, if you flip on over, this is a survey of the property that we own, we did run into an issue, and I discussed it with Andy, the boat ground itself is actually not a part of that survey, so if you wanna do this program, the county would incur a little bit of costs, because we'd have to have it resurated out, the boat ground included. The boat ground is actually part of the county road, the road terminates right out in the river, and so, that will be a little bit of the costs there, we'd also have to do a title search, just to make sure that the county does have full ownership of that road, which Andy and I already talked about that. The next page is a warrant to deeds, uh, which sort of explains the property that we currently have, uh, next page is a resolution, if y'all want to go forward, and then I'll think, Andy, we just reviewed the lease, and I'll turn it over to him for that.
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna pass out this. So, I've had various conversations with DNR representative, who's super Mexican, uh, and there was really only one vision of this lease that I was very comfortable, that y'all agreed to, um, and then finally was able to talk to the attorney for the DNR, the state, uh, and, and from the one provision, I gave you a copy of it, um, because from, from pretty much what I gathered, talking to the DNR guy, you know, if you agree to do this, for the most part, uh, this is the lease that everybody signs, so it's pretty much, you either sign this lease, or you don't, uh, I mean, I reviewed it, it seems to protect both parties, there's an act about recreational property like that, so it seems, I didn't have any objection to it, but other than, uh, this one provision, which basically, uh, talks about, there's a, in Georgia, there's a, when you're interpreting contracts, in the event that there's ever dispute about, um, a contract, and it needs to be construed, there's a, there's a rule that says that, uh, the person that drafted the contract, um, that it would be construed against that person. And so, what this provision was proposing to say was that we, we agreed to not ever have a court implement that provision, if it was ever interpreted, and in the very last sentence, which is really what I have a problem with, it says, it being agreed that the agents and council of all parties here to have participated in the preparation for it, and so my point to them was, well, the contract says that we all got together, and together we created the lease, and that's what it said, but in reality, it pretty much gave us a lease and said, we're either gonna sign this one or not, and so, anyway, bottom line is, they agreed, yeah, you're right, and they took that provision out, so, that was really the only provision that I, I wasn't comfortable with y'all signing, they took it out, and so, the lease that we've given to y'all is that, without that provision in it, um, and then, like Oakley said, uh, the DNR representative made it very clear that it's, it is our obligation to make sure we own the property, that we lease them, I mean, if we don't own it, we can't lease them, and so.
Can, can, let me stop you there, just a, so, we're not selling them, probably.
No.
We're leasing them, probably.
It's a twenty-five year lease.
Can we put a provision in there, where it cannot be subleased?
It may already be in there, um.
Cause I don't wanna sell it, and I don't want to be able to sublease.
While, while on break, I'll read and make sure, and then when I do my attorney today, I'll say whether it says that or not by that time.
Just a question, I'm sure I'm missing.
Generally, it says.
I'm obviously concerned about the sublease with the state.
Well, it says lease, let's see, okay, here, I found.
I don't know that, do you know that, Chuck?
I don't know, the state can't, sublease land, yeah.
Well, it says.
I read about that, I wanna know, Chuck.
Paragraph eleven says, let's see, you may not assign any right kind of interest it has under this lease without consent of lessor, so, there's the answer, they, they can't sublease it unless y'all agree to it, and that's usually the way most commercial leases at least.
So, I'm gonna tell you, at least that I'm all right with, I'm all right with selling.
No, I, I wouldn't.
However, I'm gonna be very blunt here, I, I, why, why I do appreciate them, uh, doing the handicap parking spot. You know, my vision for this land, when we bought it, was to have a place. You know, my vision for this land, when we bought it, was to have a place that handicapped and elderly could fish from the bank. We have done that in this county, so, you know, somehow, I want to put that in there, whether we gotta do it, or they gotta do it, or, you know, there need to be some, that there need to be some picnic, a couple of, at least a couple of shelter providers. I mean, we, we need to start capitalizing on these rivers that we've never done.
Only handicap, I've seen them pull up in the water, like downtown Blue, they got a park.
Yeah, I know, and that's what they want to do here, but I want to see something on that riverbank, because that riverbank there is, you know, right there on the water. That they could put some kind of little walk there, that somebody could roll a wheelchair there and fish out the bank.
There's nothing here that says we can't make improvements to it, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what. That, that's, that would be my only kicker, because I want to see something for elderly and the disabled in this county. I mean, we, we, even when we start doing playgrounds, they always get together about it. You know, and that status ain't good. So, I'm willing to do this, but with that exception.
Well, you know, I've had, I'm telling you, I mean, I'm not against, I always go, I've had several people ask me about this, and I'm like, I ain't, I mean, I think we should, that's why I teach us doing this stuff. You know, we bought it, I don't, we, I don't see why we should give it away, so some, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but twenty-five-year lease, but.
My friends just let us make improvements, I think that's the least we have to worry about. They take care of the boat round, get it all fixed up, and let us sit around and make some improvements, and have some handicapped fish there and stuff like that.
Well, that's, I mean, like I said, the guy that I'm gonna deal with from DNR.
I would be, I would be shocked if they was asking that directly, that they wouldn't do that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't mind reaching back after to see if that's.
But, we bought, we told them, picked out it, we'll put this in there, and all that. That boat done been done, really.
I mean, the good thing for us is.
And fans.
The, the DNR.
Boat been already done.
The DNR will be funding it all, so everything, I mean, they're paying for all the improvements.
That's what I'm. Let, let me tell you, so here's what I'd like to have. So, whoever the DNR person is, y'all may agree, or y'all, y'all agree, y'all tell me. But, I might have a workshop, tell them what we want, and if they willing to do that, what we want as a landing, what we told people we're gonna do as a landing, then, and then put in there, if we need to make any improvements, that, that we can do a joint or whatever, I mean, I think, is that possible, to have them to sit down and meet, and talk with?
And basically, something, when it comes time to plan, architecture and all that, that y'all would have input into.
Right, we want, we want.
So, it's final approval, I guess, so.
But, yeah, we need shelters down there, and we, and we gotta have something for elderly and handicapped.
And, and that's the start of this thing, because I talked to a backyard guy here, and, and he's been real nice.
Yeah, I mean, he's just a great guy.
Yeah, I'd be interested if, if we're working out to where it is better for the community, as long as we ain't selling it, I'd be good for it. But, I want, I want to do what we promised we're gonna do when we bought, I'm like Rick.
And we do.
We, we made some problems, we need to, yes.
So, and I, I'll, I'll reach back out to him tomorrow, and, and, because, I mean, they may already have that as part of their plan anyway, I mean, that might be, they'll get that, that's what we do, so. So, basically, a couple of shelters, picnic tables, just make sure I can kind of know exactly, something for the elderly and handicapped, where they can fish from the bank, so.
Yeah, some kind of little dock, and that got sticked out in the river, it could be right there, it's not bays, but where you can get up to it, they can't come up, roll up to the edge of the river on a wheelchair.
And, and didn't you say that was gonna pave?
Or cane, or.
That that was gonna pave, or lock the.
They said rock, they said.
They think that, didn't they?
It was a fail. Yeah, we stayed down there, get the sand up there.
We, we ain't done nothing down there since I did.
And on the flip side, as Oakley said, it, it will be our, we, we have to make sure, how to say it, that we own the property, and as it appears, at least, from what we've looked, we haven't done a full title search or anything, that's why I want to get your approval, do that before anything, but, that the actual landing itself, y'all got a one-point-two-five acre tract, I believe it was, but it doesn't appear that that includes all the way to the landing, but the actual, when I say landing, I mean, the property that you bought in the water, seems to be basically the end of the road, which is Steal County, but there's no survey, and it may have been an easement, not a deed. So, my point is, there's gonna be some spence on our side upfront, do a title search, whether I'm personally do it, or we hire a title abstractor to go back and see who owns that actual land, and if it is somebody else's land, that we just had an easement, you know, we're gonna have to get into quick climate, or do a survey, and quick climate's that interest in it at that point in time, so, just want to make sure y'all okay with me moving forward with that.
It was also weighed off down there.
Well, it, it was, but it's right around the rug there, and the landing was, and actual cement land, it was not in the survey.
Yep.
You know, that, there was a stop that run just like that right outside that river, all these little points, now we walked it down there.
But, not at the land.
Not at the land.
He's talking about the land.
Yeah.
And it may be that there was a deed to the.
The ramp.
For the road, itself, right? You know, so we, the county may actually own the road, it just, it wasn't part of that deed that we initially made that.
So, here's what, what I'd like for us to motion, I'd like for us to motion for them to go ahead and see what we do wrong, and what we don't own down there. Get a, get a deed and all that, and then to have a workshop, if possible, with the DNR, to discuss exactly what we want, and what they're gonna do. So, I would need some money, not that much. I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Motion, Rick, I'd say, ain't any more discussion on that.
Vain excuse.
What happened here tonight? That might not have been on one side of the survey, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Kind of what it looked like, I'm making that up.
Is Andy more discussion? I'll vote for a vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Carry it now.
And Brad, just to let you know too, when I was talking to Jeff Bishop, he had indicated that they were hoping to get, because once we approve it, then they got approved it on their August meeting, it just, we either have to have a call meeting, if once we find out about the other, to vote on it, if, to get it approved on our side before it's approved on their side, otherwise, I would like that we take the move in September, then I'll call, I'll call, call you tomorrow, after I talk to him.
I mean, you can tell, we very interested, we just completed, we'll make sure it.
Yeah.
It, if it's us, the well, so does the catch.
Okay.
I'll let y'all know if I'm down. Uh, next item is to approve or deny to select the lowest bid for a strapping project.
Okay, so this is gonna be tab five, it's just a letter from Hofstadter Associates. This is for mid-state construction and strapping incorporated in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-one thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. We had a public bid, an opening of Hofstadter, and they weren't a low bidder. The total amount that we had to be able to fund this project was right around two-hundred thousand, so we actually are able to go back in and issue change orders.
It was two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, issue change orders and include more roads, yeah, be re-strapped as well.
This was not the folks that restrapped in the Bell Telephone Road from Douglas Highway.
All right, so y'all see we got a, pretty small route to. Yeah, but, I mean, we can do that, all we have to do is approve it, and I'll select the lowest bid for the project.
We'll make a motion.
I have a motion by hand.
Second.
Second by Rick, any more discussion. I'll vote. Motion carries, you may move.
Cover up with fifty grand, if you want, send it up, please, and let us know what you want.
Discuss, Elme, twenty-twenty-one road resurface.
So, that's gonna be the next tab, tab over on tab six. The first sheet, if I put it correctly, for Brooks, mine's rough, hopefully yours is not. Should be a cost estimate, and that's gonna tell you the total cost of the project, which is roughly one billion, well, that's not rough, that's exactly one billion, thirty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and twelve cents is the total project cost estimate. We have a local maintenance and improvement grant from GDOT, and the amount of five-hundred-and-eighty thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and four cents, the county is required to do a ten percent match, at fifty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy cents. So, that means we would have to, to do this as it's currently written up, we would have to pull from T. discretionary, the total of three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Do we have that taken?
He had one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eight-seven, and thirty-seven cents.
And the next thing you'll see is the maps, so the first one is all Chupacan County, and then it goes in. The next sheet you should see is post-road, so this is continuing off from where it's already been resurfaced, going from Bell Telephone to John Cemetery, this includes Witten. The next road you'll see is Burke's Ferry, that is three miles from the city limits, all the way to Warren Road. And the next one around city is South of Hazelhurst District, based the rest of Holsher, continuing off of town square, all of Billy Foster, and Commissioner Benjamin requested all of the paid portion of Tallahassee Church Road, however, the funding ran out of the Elme, and so, that is going as far as we can go, all the money that we have.
I would need a motion to accept or deny this.
Agreement. So, so this is just the. So, but these, these calls aren't, no, this says.
It's a process.
Yes, yeah. Sorry, Allison.
I make a motion to put that on the. I have a motion, hang.
So, real quick, I'll go ahead, what was I saying?
Second, hang, is any discussion?
Yes, so, we may actually be able to do more once the bids come in, because prices are going down.
Yes.
Quite possible.
Got a motion, hang, select, hang, is any more discussion? I'll vote, raise your right hand. Motion carries, you may move.
The only one that's been widened is.
Project.
Project, yes.
How much of that is being widened, I mean, how?
It starts at the.
Right, not as.
How much wider?
Yeah, how much wider?
Four feet total.
Yeah.
Two feet only. You bend down the, the other one out there.
All roads should be widened.
We have to go just about as wide as the base. The widening part, almost, most of the base, of that, of the old road.
Can I ask a question?
What?
You know, why is some counties, when, when contractors are, are retaping the roads, they're adding a little, I'm gonna say two foot at the driveways, or a road intersection, we're not getting that.
Someone's actually doing more than that, that's included in your bid, so.
We got some.
If, if, if we want to do that, that would have to include in our bid, and that would shorten our mileage.
There's some spots in our areas, I'm not saying every driveway or every road intersection needs to be done, there's some spots that needs to be looked at.
I would totally agree.
A pile of.
I'm just saying, that's why you see some counties, because they, they ask for that in their bid.
Well, it looks to me like it would save some of your roads.
It does, it.
Because I can tell y'all, right there coming off of Bill Johnson Road, right there, Miss Moses, it's rough.
This is our first one we widened, so we gotta take big steps, just a bit further, we'll go from here. Hopefully, the rest don't.
But, I can see so much improvement that we will start to widen.
All, all should have been widened.
All right, next thing is discuss joint, our revolving loan.
That's gonna be tab seven, you have two letters. The first one is, basically, the Joint Melman Authority made a mistake, they received rent checks, and they deposited three, I believe, different rent checks, all in the amount of four thousand dollars into the revolving loan fund account, instead of into their other accounts. So, there is a total of twelve thousand dollars that is in the revolving loan fund, that should not be there, they are requesting that the county be able to provide them a check, or actually, it's got the cashier's check, going back to them, in that amount.
Has anybody looked at that?
Jimmy Plow did other books, he was the one who found the error on our side.
You don't do, or have a look at that? But, I'm not gonna vote on taking that, that you look at. That's me, y'all may want to vote on.
I make a motion, y'all look at it, and if it's like that, one, the photo, give it back to me. You look at it, if it's like a photo, please give it back to me.
Yeah, I'll say it. Yeah, motion by, second by, hang.
So, we verify what they're saying.
When y'all verify.
You're gonna pay, I think that's gonna come back to y'all.
Well, and then why I tell you, I always want y'all to verify.
I want to look at the bank statement, so.
This there, give it to me.
Yep.
Again, motion by Rick, second by hang, is any more discussion? I mean. Everybody, wait, raise your right hand. Motion carries, you may move.
Okay, the second letter is, actually sent ahead, but essentially, this is for the administrative fee to administer the revolving loan fund. Resolution that was passed, and it's been attached to, and I didn't review this earlier today, does allow for them actually to request twenty-five hundred, they're requesting twenty-four hundred dollars for their administrative costs of the revolving loan fund, this is not coming out of our general fund, this actually comes out of the payments that they receive back on the revolving loan fund.
Yeah, I literally just finished the banking account, because you checked it.
And this was done last year, I don't know if it came to y'all for approval, but I figured we'd send it your way.
And, and so, it was when Keith was here, and I actually asked a question about it, because Keith said he, they had never been done before. But, at that moment, on risk, it's a mistake, and it stated that, and then I presented it to Oakley.
And it does say this in here, it's actually six percent or twenty-five hundred dollars, whichever is higher.
Yeah, a motion by hang.
Second.
Second by Rick. Hang right hand. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, you may move. All right, is that it on the, on the, on the? All right, policy changes. Uh, we talked about tenant policy, and it's been drawn up, for you to look at.
The warning to Burke is actually incorrect, that was called over, and we got a little thing, and there's one that's failed on.
Hand it to one of them, I think he saw it.
I got it. So, y'all got the policy there, you want to read it right quick, or you want to have Andy read it too?
I'm just kidding.
Basically, what we talked about, one to five days on required quarantine, policy test for total one fourteen. Thanks.
Read it out. I said the following policy shall be, shall apply to Chupacan County employees who have tested positive for COVID nineteen infection, or if a healthcare provider or public healthcare official has required the employee to quarantine because the employee has been exposed to a person with COVID nineteen. To qualify for paid administrative, administrative leave under the COVID policy, whether due to require quarantine or positive test result. The employee is required to provide a written evidence of the positive test result, or a letter from the healthcare provider or healthcare official requiring the quarantine. Any leave without this required documentation will be paid from the employee's BTO. Required quarantine is one to five days, which is eight hours to forty hours, and a positive test result is one to fourteen days, eight hours to one-hundred-and-twelve hours.
Well, I see one thing here in this policy, Andrew, that I want to ask about.
Okay.
Because it says, employees who test positive for COVID nineteen infections, or if a healthcare provider or public healthcare official have required the employee quarantine, called the employee have been exposed. So, what happens if, what this is saying is, if you get exposed, you got to have a healthcare person to take you home. So, it's called you exposed, you don't go home.
Yeah, I think the thing that we're trying to avoid is, somebody won't take a, I, I don't know if this would happen, but somebody just say, oh, I got exposed, and they get a week off.
Well, I think we got something that going on already, so that's why I want to address that, so, with your information, if your information, if somebody says we're closing up, they got to have, they got to have a healthcare person tell them that.
And I think too, that. And I think too, the requirements on what requires quarantine has changed. It's more, I think there's a time limit from what I understand. You gotta be within three feet of somebody for 15 minutes or... But I think the healthcare provider will be able to determine whether or not... That's just six weeks. Yeah, well, whether or not the quarantine required. Otherwise, you're gonna have people up here asking our people in the department or up at your office, this happened, now I was around this person, trying to see if we improved it or not.
Yeah, it's gonna be very easy to be exposed in some way, shape, or form. Now, be exposed at six weeks or 15 minutes is a different scenario. So I just wanna make sure that we follow this policy, which I think we've already failed.
Well, my question, and this is for our information board when something does happen. So if somebody does come and say they've been exposed and...
They would need to call a healthcare professional and say, do I need to go home or do I need to be at work?
Okay, I need to put this in my question. Um, you've been exposed at a... At a wedding.
Yeah.
You come to her, you find out that you're there, that you've already stood next to everybody in this room and talked for an hour. At that point, this is my question for if this is asked. Do you all go get tested or do you call and ask if you should get tested? I'm asking because in the first COVID situation, if you got exposed, you had to go get tested. So I'm kind of...
I recommend this is a seed seed.
Right, so what is right? That's what I'm asking now.
What about the 14 that you sat down behind the table with?
But that's what I'm asking.
Then they go get tested or...
I'm asking this because this is what's really coming to our office and I ask.
It says that you have to have a healthcare official to make that decision.
Okay, well, I'm asking this because when it comes to our office to ask those questions.
They need to have a healthcare official.
Okay.
I'm not qualified for that.
Okay.
And I'm kind of hitching that a little bit off where everybody else around here is doing it. Because there's no... This is very weak compared to everybody else. Most of them, PTO, doesn't matter.
Oh, I know.
Schools ain't doing anything. Use your personal time. My company, Tabor, ain't doing anything. Use your personal time off. We're doing this for our and for the person.
I'm just asking for this again, obviously it's already kind of starting to stand, so I...
This is very explicit. You would need either written conversation, you are hoping, or a call from the healthcare provider that says that employee needs to be home. If not, they're expected to be at work.
But if it's a call, it better be followed up and right.
With a fax or something.
Yeah.
Chances are... If they've been exposed, chances are they're gonna go to the doctor and get a kiss. I mean, they think they've been exposed, well, they should be at work. They're gonna go to the healthcare provider and get tested and explain, here's what happened.
So we pretty much need to tell them they need to call their healthcare provider and have their recommendation on what they need to do. And then at that point, if they do decide that they are... If the healthcare provider tells them to go get tested, then you can bring this documentation at that point.
That's correct.
If you... Let me ask you how long to test.
If they have...
If you expose somebody, how long before you have?
That's based on...
I base what Rodney said, but that's called your explanation.
No, it has an incubation period most of the time. In any way, the last I've read on it, somewhere between five and seven days, you can have it.
Let's just go by this right here and a healthcare provider needs to make that decision.
And it does say healthcare provider or official, which I think would need maybe that.
Probably like 40 years or something like that.
Somebody that's...
And they tell them to quarantine at that point, we're supposed to get some type of quarantine. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
For clarification. I understand that you said that if they go and they cannot, if they have to quarantine, they're paid for $8. What about... What about...
No, it's eight to...
They're paid for $8.
That's it.
That's it.
We're gonna have exposure.
Eight to four.
It says eight to four.
So eight to 40 hours. But it means one to five days. It don't mean we're gonna pay.
Because we have a 24-hour shift is what I was getting at. All right, we're gonna have exposure. We've had exposure. And we're having, we're trying to develop our own... I don't know, policy, not policy, but procedures due to the fact if we go to a person that's got it, we give them an opportunity. You've been exposed. As long as you're wearing your PPEs and such as that, I give them the opportunity. Just soon as we find out that the person is positive, do you want to be tested? And they either sign, yes, they do, no, they don't, bottom of this time or whatever. Then you don't get to be tested later. But it means right now I'm asymptomatic and we're not asking to be tested. So that's kind of the way we're doing it in our department because we're gonna be exposed. And it could be for a 10-minute ride or it could be a four-hour ride, depending on where we're having to take the patient. So there will be exposure with us, but we're trying to do something a little bit different in our department. Where we can, if not, you can have people out all the time. We can't do that. So we're trying to be as careful as we can.
Seven to five days, which means the old days is 24 hours, so that's really three days. I mean, you ain't gonna work three days, 24 hours. So you still, 40 hours a week is what the basic amount.
Right, that's fine. But I just wanted to mention too about what we're trying to do to take care of that problem with us and alleviate any kind of extensive exposure due to the fact that we're gonna wear the PPEs where they are provided for them to wear. And if they don't wear them...
What this right here is, is the government is not like first time. The government is not providing money for them. So this is money that we have left over that we're gonna do as a county. It ain't, it ain't government doing this.
Yes. And we do, eight hours, my first question was to you, if they told me out of day.
But it's still 40 hours. Well, they told me out of day.
They didn't have two days.
Well, one to five days is eight hours to 40. It don't mean eight hours a day.
This is what the market was saying.
Then we'll say that would work for, so I mean, same, it's still 40 hours comes up. Four days or a day and a half with y'all. Any other questions?
You got a question?
Okay, good. Save for the hang. Is any more discussion? All vote raised right hand. Motion carried and announced. I have two more questions, huh?
Okay, now, Mr. Chairman, the second policy proposed change is to our travel policy. So currently, hourly wage employees' time spent while traveling for the county is not considered working hours. For example, if an employee is traveling out of town for work or for training, they're supposed to clock out and will not be paid for the time spent traveling even if it is required traveling by the county. So what we're asking for is salary and hourly wage employees' time spent while traveling on official business for the county will be considered working hours for each employee traveling. Employees traveling using their own personal vehicle will be eligible to submit a voluntary personally in addition to hourly wage employees, they have to claim hours worked. That's our first thing.
So right now, we're not saying equal to...
So how this came up is actually the Recreation Department. Their administrative assistant had to drive, I think it was five hours through, something if you remember.
Travel.
Up towards Chattanooga for Smoots. And she was not able to count any of those five hours as work time. Five hours there, five hours back.
Why let you? Who told her she could?
Hannah told us that that is not allowed.
So that was, I mean, was it for swimming?
Yes.
I mean, she was working.
Yes.
I mean, that ain't, that ain't the same as swimming.
Yes, Hannah informed me that this is our current policy.
Right. We need to...
We need to add. But I would say the part of your policy there that I do not agree with is on salary pay. There will not be more compensation on salary pay.
I'm not necessarily asking for more compensation to salary. Just for it to be considered working time, because salary people don't necessarily get more compensation anyhow on their salary.
But it is considered already.
Yeah. We're not changing anything for the salary. You're just gonna put it in the verb, but you can ask for national...
All right, y'all hear the motion, both?
We're gonna vote for this one.
Well, the second one is if y'all approve the first one because of T-Night, the direct department has to backdate this to July 1st. That way we can pay her a direct for this 10 hours.
Are you gonna pay her for this?
Yeah.
I'll back that one for you. I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll say. For the first proposed change, you had to say...
For both, both. Man made the motion. Hank said, is any more discussion? All vote, raise your right hand. Motion carried and announced.
And just because we didn't have any more discussion on that, we need to check our mileage rate too to make sure it's consistent.
Uh, policy, I think it was adopted by the Board in 2017. The sport has changed with whatever ours has happened. This work time is 56 cents a mile.
Uh, next thing is to discuss job description for administrative assistants who will fall in commission office.
So this is in tab nine. I would actually recommend if y'all have major questions, major discussion, to do this in closed session. But nonetheless, this is the proposed job description.
This is very new from the last job description.
Uh, I wasn't able to find an actual type of job description for...
Are we talking about an empty clerk here?
No.
But we call them administrative assistants.
Yes.
Okay, same thing.
So this was typed up, Chelsea, before she left her mother in the end of the... Hannah will do it again. So that's where we're at at this moment in time.
Obviously, what we need to do about it. I'm like they...
We need to look at that session and maybe use that break. Any more discussion?
All right, sir. I'll make a motion to play this through. Say, say.
I'll say. Motion by Hank. Second by Hank. Is any more discussion? All vote raised right hand. Motion carried and announced. All right, update time. Road department, after Eddie Brooks.
I don't really got too much. I know we've been a little slow. Oh, Ricky, he's hollering about one of his and he ain't giving me much trouble about it. But I thought he might've been gonna get to it and ain't got to it yet. But we had a few pipes and all put in with one thing. Mr. Hogg probably don't know about it, but I done a little work here there today. He'll have him in the road. But it ain't no ground yours, but it's over in that hog hillbait. There you boy up in the low road. But that Alhene, like, we do got to do something to that and I'm like, he's nerdy and everything.
So what we had on this, I might have got you here. What we had on this road over here belongs to us. We've had three, two, two pipes and all.
Well, really, we hadn't done nothing weird. I went in there and looked at it.
Yeah.
I figure it's gonna take 10 or 12 loads of dirt and you're probably taking days to bed.
Well, it's already all robed. I mean, all I ask is if he'll furnish the pipe.
Well, they, they, three pipes got to be put in.
So can we start on some of those hill paper pipes?
Yeah, we can get started on the dog.
It's got their off road there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's already off road. It's already been...
Yeah, it's driveway pipe what it is. Our crossdrinks and all still in there. But just three driveway pipes is what we're gonna need. When we go in here and cut the bed that thing, we gonna cut their drives out.
That's right.
And we need the pipes put in for my bed.
And I think he's already agreed, so. So we'll send him up there to paper them pipes and then just as soon as he can. But I don't...
Yeah, I think we did that thing we do with it about a day. Is that all I got?
Thank you. Recreation Department, Bruce Jones.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I mean, we got a wonderful spring this summer. Things went good. I learned we won five state championships in baseball softball. I mean, we done that. I mean, the phenomenal year we ever had in history, I think, was recreation ball. I mean, that's just... I mean, we had eight-year boys, state champs. Eight-year girls, state runner-ups. Ten-year boys live on them, state champs. Ten-year girls, pitching machine was fifth place. Twelve-year boys, fifth place. That was in the street of Canada. Twelve-year girls, state runner-up. Fourteen boys, Navy, state champs. Fourteen boys, Gole, we played for state championship there. About fourteen-year boys, Navy, they go to play. Got state in the runner-up there. Um, fourteen girls, state champ. Seventeen girls, state champion. That's seven years in the road and them girls ever won state champions. And they went all the way from eight years all the way up to seventeen. That's a pretty good achievement. About a state in history that's ever done that in the URA. Golf, we won state championship. Patrick Pickford, won state championship there. TNS, we had fourteen-year boys, state champion. Girls, fourteen-year girls, state champion. And the two, one state champion, boy girl there, no mixed doubles, and won state championship. That was, um, Corey Beachy and Corey Mims. They won state champion. Swimming, we talked about water yoga there in the ringo. Had twelve swimmers out of twenty-eight swimmers for the summer off this state tournament. We had eleven first place state champions in swimming. Three second place, four third place, and four fourth place. I mean, we got, we're registering for football out now. You know, from four to 12-year-olds. And we got soccer, soccer. And, you know, I need to, if I get somebody to help me get a little... I'm trying to get everybody's blitzer back. I mean, they, they, they lug them and if you pick them up out there, they gonna fold and just gonna mess them up. You know, when we done the cross out there, it's... You're a little, I'm trying to get somebody to put a lugger out here, collect the scotting and put it back when they left. So if I could, I'd get y'all's help up there. I've asked, I've asked...
What was it, supposed to put it back?
He said with us. He never did. He said, well, he has a little back on site, you know, he do it.
You gonna put it back up on cement?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you can be anchored down later on that cement right there. I'm ready to set up on it, you know, there.
Well, I mean, we just complimented it. If you don't come do it, they won't have another job since getting it. Make the plan, something. Part of this...
I mean, we run into it twice in the National.
I just wanted to go to the stall.
They drove them out. I didn't, I didn't have to...
I can put a hole in it like I did.
And I hope, like I said, I hope Sarah...
I got the... I took the first job there. Can y'all move it?
Any, I'll talk to any about it.
We really ain't got enough to... What we got's gonna be too tall for the one or the...
I got two hundred and fifty.
I can give them.
I don't want to poke.
We're eating them by the... We can do it.
I mean, I just say, let me out if you don't...
Oh, he told me, he told me he couldn't move it. I'm already calling for that.
Well, he will tell you.
I talked to him, but I, I mean, I'll call him more.
Tell me, he told me to bring the little back. When he put the little back on site, he get it.
He wouldn't have.
I thought it's gonna take a little back under there. Because you got much running to maneuver out there. I told you, you got the plants and everything. You got all about two foot.
All right.
But, um, I know what we talked about, uh...
Let's, let's call him and if he can't, let's figure out some way to get back.
Get it on, I mean, we're just manning it all right there. I mean, maybe, maybe those ends is pretty easy. But I'm telling you, when you get to the middle right there, it's...
Man, that's pretty rough.
Hey, come on, I love this, bro. I'll hit you.
I mean, the deal when that happens.
Don't have me having... What are y'all, I mean, what are y'all practice golf at? I heard you say somebody wanted golf.
We do golf out here and we do different sites. I mean, we're at the Blueberry Place.
So many people play to golf?
We had, we had six participants this year. I mean, it was down. I mean, like I said, we had three to go state and two of them won.
I got you.
Now, Mr. Chairman Bruce has talked a lot about all the young people's accolades, but he's left out an accolade about himself that he told me the other day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in Brad, just to, I've been, I have, I've worked on the bids, I got four bids gonna be coming on, on the ice machine. But our department's been recommended for first reasons, the highest, the first saving of highest award in state for the RPA, including myself. And all, I mean, that's, that's pretty good achievement, and our department, I've been here, and everything we do is about that.
How much?
I mean, I'll go tomorrow night, the bank was tomorrow, and if we go, go to North Rock, Black Creek.
I wish I was enough, these fields and stuff, I talked to you about it, what, you know.
One fifty is about the gold price, it's, it's more than some folks around.
Yeah, I tell you, I may as well.
More than, I mean, because I tell you, I bid yourself, your community want prostrals there, I mean, dollars, squash dollars and stuff like that, that's where you prosper. Your community, I mean, maybe establishments, and motel, and lodging and stuff like that. That's where you really, you can prosper, cause, I know at one time, there was three or four thousand dollars a week coming in here, or squash dollars. That's documented.
Alright.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Mr. Susan Harris.
Do you have a?
Thank you. That's just kind of a description of some of the job, um, duties that our officers. A lot of people just think you come in, you pay taxes and, um, get your car taxed, there's a lot more to it than what needs to have. Um, with the late property tax, and we have to distribute it to the state county school and the city. Um, mobile home, we have to bill and collect timber tags, we have to bill and collect, um, facilities. We have to collect, um, interchangeable tags and distribute it. We collect hotel, hotel tags from Board of Tourism and the Chamber of Commerce. We collect delinquent tags, we conduct two-pack sales a year, um, issue on, when we want this held, it's gonna be held up at the field. We're doing our mobile home and our wheels, real, um, and personal together this year. Um, we try to make final piles to the people that, um, has signed an agreement to make ta, make payments. Um, we compile and send in a school audit every year, a state audit, county audit. Um, issue release by phase with delinquent taxes compiled and the property tax digest, make the state requirements, receive an order to bill and collect the state, from the state. Compile the, um, mobile home digest to bill and collect mobile home taxes, process and mail delinquent tax letters for property and mobile home taxes, work with mortgage companies and while your chicken taxes. Facts, email, mail bills and receipts, work through bankruptcy call cases. Keep all deposits and all accounts, keep with goods up to date every month. Our motor vehicle, sales tags, apply the titles, collect abhorrent taxes on vehicles and distribute the money to the state county school and city, collect T F D two. This is title abhorrent tax, this is the tax that the state changed in two thousand thirteen where when you go purchase a vehicle, you don't have sales tax on it anymore. Um, you have title abhorrent tax, so if you go buy a vehicle, you don't pay eighty percent right now, you don't pay six point six percent. Um, handle appeals on T F D Z values, assess title reports, weekly to the state, issue dis, disable person papers, issue, collect, I'm sorry. Um, insurance flat fee, issue homemade serial numbers to drivers, help dealers for title work, collect out of state sales tag. Um, and the title abhorrent tax is really adding great more deal work in the county than they on the state. Um, and I started full-time in the tax commissioner's office in May of nineteen eighty-seven. Everything was done manually, made computers, a lot of times it's really good and had to get better. Then the state meant, um, a statewide system called GRADAS. It took everyone to get used to it. About the time everyone got used to it, all the changes, the state couldn't live with drives. We all went live in May of nineteen ninety-nine. Our lives have, have been changed ever since, not for the best. The state has quit paying for any supplies and let it, and left it up to the counties. In GRADAS, we could sell a tag in about five weeks. Now it takes about thirteen, so it takes longer to sell a tag and everything now than what it used to. My office is big as a year, than ever. My two cars at the front don't hardly ever get to their desk, and most days we have to open our third tag window. We are very mandated by the state on motor vehicle. We get blessed out a lot, but the state passing laws every year that came to us, and we have to file. Sometimes they don't make sense that we still have to do it or not do it. From July the first, and I try to run these in a hurry, um, from July the first till today, um, property taxes. I collected ten million, six hundred and fifty-five dot, five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Um, T A V T, I collected three million, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four, fourteen. Tagged title reports, I collected four hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-one, ninety-four. A A V T, um, one hundred and ten thousand, eight fifty-three, twenty-six. And abhorrent ninety-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, fifty-six. And I didn't have time to get all my, um, my vehicle stuff, but just that was fourteen million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. And I had it right down.
Is that C D two?
Mm-hmm. But, um, from July the first till today, I had collected just a county was five million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents. And I got it. I gotta move it right down like here, help my passive by it. Shows the state county, this little board, city, and I didn't have all these, I'm sorry. For some reason across the state, the tax commissioners are the least liked of all the constitutional officers. We don't understand, we don't think we are better than any other constitutional officers, we just want to be treated the same. We do bring in, they have told us about seventy-five cent of the county budgets, and we also bring a little bit of money to the state, even a small county, like Jeff Davis. It's nothing for us to bring in to send a chip to the state for a hundred thousand dollars just to have it take a month. We have started working on the two thousand and one digest, but until we get a new server, it's going to be, there is no process. Our computer, our server keeps running hot and we have to keep putting a fan on it. So, um, that's where I'm at right now, and I know this is, like I said, kind of.
So, let's talk about two things, um, we have to, uh, the server, is this, this very critical thing, if we lose it, we don't want to go back to rest and have it back. Uh, this is pretty much antique, should have already been replaced. But it's gonna be somewhere, hopefully it's gonna be less than ten thousand dollars, but I just want y'all to be aware that we gonna have to have it.
Or we can.
We can see it's gonna be less than ten thousand dollars, cause we go out and bug on it.
What we need, shouldn't I? I made a call in this morning to have an consultant and let her, uh, a voice now, I believe, um, but I've not heard back from, just practically out of the house, so.
So that's where we're at. We, we gonna get one, but I mean, I saw with two options, if more than ten thousand dollars, we gonna have to have it. If less than ten thousand dollars, I know we need it, we gotta have it, but we gotta see where we at on that. Uh, next thing is, so I don't know, maybe hopefully, you know, when I first started being a commissioner, some seven years ago, we, we used to have department heads in here and do this kind of thing. What I basically want from department heads, maybe I didn't relay that information good enough, cause I wanna know where you at on your budget? And where you at on time lines, you know, like. So, if that's the last day to turn in taxes, I mean, are you nine cent dumb, or are you eight cent dumb? Like, that's kind of the whole topic, and I just wanna know. I don't wanna know everything, I just, it just kind of keeps us updated where we at.
About ninety-seven percent collected on my two thousand twenty taxes. And like I said, my tax bill is October the fifth, and I have some of that collected then. Um, which I got the mother on, and, but I should have those other two apartments we had, paid here and that. Um, but, um, I have people that, you know, they just can't pay all their taxes at one time. And I have a lot of them with some payment plans, but they, um, they, they queue ID to save the money, and all interest comes to the county. And when your tax bill is, um, the state changed it, if it's a hundred and twenty days late, there's a five percent penalty.
So, is it actually legal to suit it to set up a plan on taxes? It is?
Yeah. I'm most, some tax commissioners don't do it, but I probably say that maybe less than ten, a hundred and fifty-nine counties. Um, they kind of buy, cause when you go to school, you better get what you can get.
Oh, I think, I mean, you need to have people, I mean, everybody has one. Everybody has a bad day, I'm fine, you know, everybody will work with that.
People can't, you know, everybody working on this, explaining, you know, but, um.
One, one question I'm gonna ask you and I'm gonna ask Kathy, when this, for Turner, for the quarterly thing, is we struggle each year, uh, putting together our budget, waiting on figures. Is there any way we could speed up the figures that you and her have to give us a month?
Well, I don't have any, she has all the figures, and I guess it would be according to the, um.
But don't you have to give her some, or?
No, the office members, I give her our, um, um, abhorrent tax on vehicles, and that's, that's not that much.
So you can give us that month, or?
I just, I, I just, we, we, every year we struggling with budgets, cause we're just really, and, and we've been very, we've been very fortunate. But it, it would really help if we had it, I'm, I heard.
When I talked to Kathy about it, she says that she can't give it to us until the digest comes out. So one thing that could be considered, and this is up to y'all, is us changing our fiscal year to January to December, so the budget can be done in September. Or start the budget in September when the digest comes out, or you still want to get it.
So it's, it's basically the call for a county set up for fiscal year, help the digest, is for the whole state, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's how I was explaining.
So we might need to look at that. That, that's really critical, just looking to get.
And how both of their offices work, is Kathy assigns the value on property, she doesn't necessarily assign the taxes, and that transfers over to Suzie's office, and then she calculates what the taxes are.
Uh, would y'all?
I would say none of the numbers to taxes and the money.
Would, would y'all, before you get together, and give us a recommendation on when our year should be, so that we could do our budget simply. If it's backing it up a month, or going forward a month, or, or whatever, we, we, we need to do. But really, it's, it's tough, it's tough doing a budget when you ain't got.
We wait a bunch of people.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have ten million or twenty million.
Yes, you're really not, I'm not, to, after really the assessment, I want the medicine stays out and see how many appeals you gonna have.
That's dramatic, that's, but I mean, how, how long does that happen?
Well, after you send them out, you got forty-five days to appeal.
Let's, let's look at that, and just make sure, when is the best time for us to have a year end, what? Y'all give that?
And I may can get you, and I may, I mean, it make you feel better when I need to talk to Kenny Holtson, which is the director of the property tax, and.
I mean, cause what it does always kind of makes us feel like, hey, they should already have two, so maybe y'all on time, we just ahead time.
Mm-hmm, so I'll explain that.
Just, just remember, a lot more things tied up in the year too, besides just the budget. Everybody got insurance care, everything that's changed.
That's right.
If you don't wanna, you don't wanna do all that in the junior.
And then have to turn around in December, no, well, that's why it happened.
You really screw up on this budget one time, like you, everybody won't be happy.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, just remember, it ain't just.
And what is, and that's why, when it's done, it's, it's proposed to go up to four percent. I mean, you can play with it, go less or more, but it's.
One day I'll admit that, I've been on for thirty years, so, sooner or later, that don't bite you.
Correct.
But like I said, the only, the only things I give are the mobile homes and, uh, heavy duty, and you know that, that heavy equipment, and you know, that's not much. And, um, abhorrent vehicles, so those are the only freebies I give, to go on the digest.
Alright, thanks, Susan. Madam President, we prepared.
Yes, sir, so I'd be agreeable. Uh, one, our financial status, we are eight point three-three percent of the year completed. Um, revenue, it, it looks bad on the sheet, uh, but that's mainly because we just not filled the stuff in, part, we had our filler out, we're trying to leave, and so we're just a little behind, but we'll get there.
We're trying to finish out twenty twenty.
So, we can help. So we'll jump on that to expenses, July twenty twenty-one, year-to-date, only one month, uh, we have spent seven hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-seven cents, so we spent six point eight percent. Again, eight point three-three percent of the year's completed, and one reason we're higher is the equipment for nine-one-one that had been paid, and we're hoping, um, we get reimbursed for that. That way, you sure, you know, come back in for that, but that's one reason we're a little bit higher right now. Uh, and July of twenty twenty, uh, our year-to-date end was six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, so six point five percent. So we have spent forty-two thousand, ten dollars and ninety-five cents more compared to this time last year. Looking forward to the EMS call-in for non-transports, they had sixty-six calls, blood draw was four, uh, lift assist was thirteen, discharges were nine, out-of-town transfers were twenty-three, trauma calls were fifty-one. Medical was a hundred and sixty-six, cardiac was fifteen, advanced life support was sixteen, basic life support was one-seventy, and mortal calls was thirty. Uh, the next point is Towns Bluff campers, I've already talked to the chairman about this, uh, the county has two county-owned campers at Towns Bluff Park, both of them are moved. Both campers were aged or receiving multiple complaints, and we'd had to start refunding people from where they stayed, and they just had an awful experience. So.
The ones that have just been pulled over here?
Yes, over at the road park yard. So both are currently at the road park, uh, in the process of being auctioned off through the gov deals. Uh, on March third of twenty fifteen, the board of commissioners agreed to a proposal to put these campers at Towns Bluff. Part of that agreement, though, was if they were ever sold, those funds would be divided equally with the E M A, who originally purchased the campers, and Towns Bluff. Um, so that's what we'll have to do with those funds once they're sold. Uh, next point, re-taming the courthouse building, so Network Service Consultants, N S C, is currently outside, um, they got here a few days. Um, they got here a few days, maybe Friday of last week, and they've started the process of re-capling. They said in their original bid that they estimate they come, uh, work time for two weeks. Uh, I do have a question for you all, though, that needs your approval, if you want to do it. Our original project scope was to include the sheriff's office and old magistrate office beside that building, uh, because they are now within a year of being moved to a new complex. Uh, if we go ahead and move forward with that re-capling process, if we have to go back in after they move out and do major renovations, we're basically gonna be knocking out everything we paid for and having to do it again. So I would recommend y'all vote and approve a change order, and let's drop those two buildings from that original scope of work for NSC. Also, what would it cost?
How much was that?
Uh, ninety-six thousand and some change, I believe.
Just for the sheriff's?
Yeah, just for the sheriff, it wasn't quoted that way, so I can't exactly tell you exactly how much it's costing to do that part.
You don't think we'll be able to pull over there?
We probably will, but if they require any renovations whatsoever, it's gonna be basically knocking out everything they're doing, if they move forward with that, and having to redo it again. Um, it depends on what level of renovations those buildings are gonna require.
What I'm asking is, can we get a service for it? Service, server, server, over there?
I mean, NSC can provide file server as well, and that's basically what I'm doing.
If that's, can we get a server in place of that for Susie?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can you actually work it, work it off, help the magistrate out? Let, and let them do the server one here, and that's what they do.
Okay. But nonetheless, it would require y'all to vote and approve the change order.
I would, I'd like to spend any money on them being put in a year, but that would be high, but...
But if it's two thousand dollars, then, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we made a couple of hours, we made all the changes, nothing went to the max, so maybe we might just move it and not have to do it again. But let's see what it is first, so what, what kind of limits y'all wanna put on, if it's, uh...
I don't know, I thought you were gonna call it.
I, I'm thinking it's probably gonna, you know...
I know that's probably the most expensive part over there, because the buildings, uh, the buildings, one, doesn't have the conduits like the rest of the buildings do, so it's gonna be a lot of wire molding. And then they've got to go outside the building, all the posts, and then go around to the next building.
I'm, I'm thinking them two buildings gonna be about half of what I'll give you. That's what I'm thinking, I don't know.
We just can't help but see if they can fit it, just shoot a wrong email in this, but maybe we can.
Let's say, let's just say, if you wanna vote on, if it's ten thousand or less, to leave it, and if it's ten thousand or more, to take it out. What about that? So I'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Van, say from Rick. Any discussion? All favor either, I think.
And the only other item I have is, um, one of the meetings last month, Mr. Basusa had talked about outsourcing the county road department, and I was asked to look into that a little bit more. Uh, message of the county administrators and managers on our list of around the state. And overall, I received several responses from different counties, and two responses from state associations. Two counties reported they had never attempted to do so, one metro county had reported they had outsourced most of their department with great results. Two counties, an, um, additional individual with knowledge of two other counties have foretold. All those counties in rural areas reported they had attempted to do so with very bad results. Other administrators and managers cautioned against complete outsourcing due to emergency situations such as during storms. Most all suggested outsourcing would require multiple companies instead of just one. And then one individual in county in southeast Georgia recommended doing a case analysis, and you all want to consider that anymore. So that is it for my report, and the only other thing you have, um, Mr. Chairman, you asked to try to get financials that look, so a little more like the hospitals. So I will go over all this in detail, but if y'all look at it, it's got very insistent for each department.
I got one question, the building, the defect building, and where we get the lease on that? Why are we gonna do that, go here and...
I go into executive session, I have something.
All attorney, Andrew Rainey.
And it's my opinion that I don't think, that, that our, our policy already anticipates that. And so if you'll flip over to page three there, well, really it's page four. And this deal, it's actually section thirty dash thirty-five, says all solid waste from county delivery and transfer stations, so the very last sentence of that ordinance, which is your county trash ordinance, says all private collectors and haulers of solid waste in the unincorporated area of county must deliver all such waste to the transfer station. Of course, under definitions back, you know, private collector is somebody that's doing it for a profit. So, good news is, it's already there, and then if you even bump down, uh, another to thirty dash thirty-seven A, um, the flip side is also said, which means that if you are not a person that is doing it for a business, that you can't use the transfer station. So it, it covers both, meaning if you're just a normal individual, you can't go to the transfer station. Um, and then even if you flip over to the next page, page five, um, we're talking about, you know, permits, so thirty-six seven, it basically says, hey, if you're going to collect waste in our county, you have to get a permit from the board of commissioners, or it's authorized as a need, the permit shall be issued for collection, solid waste shall be separate apart from any other license requirement. And so, rather than taking the time, the, an effort to necessarily amend this ordinance, those people, they gotta get the license from us, and as part of getting our license from us, they gotta show us they got the license from the E P D. So I feel like that what we've got here is already envisions what needs to be done, so with your blessing, I would say that I'm, I'm satisfied with where we're at with our current ordinance, without spending any more money, time, effort, to amend it, if everybody's okay with that.
Can we do one thing, if you don't, if everybody's agreeing with it? Just, just so, ten years from now, they know that we reviewed this and discussed it, and that it was like it was founded in two thousand six, can we just somewhere say that review and put the date date on something? Because although right now, it looks like this policy hasn't been updated since the ordinance of two thousand five and ordinance of two thousand six. So if I was a new county commissioner and I saw this, I'd be like, my gosh, we got, we got this on here, they haven't been done in twenty, twenty years. But, you know, the fact that we're reviewing it now and discussing it, can, can we somewhere put review and revise and review and something, I'll change the words, I don't know. Somewhere where we've done something with it, where, where in the future, they know that we reviewed it in twenty twenty-one.
I mean, I, I might do that if I want to, however, I would say, I don't think it needs to be changed.
It doesn't change, I'm just saying, somewhere we need to know that this is not a two thousand six policy, because we just reviewed it today.
I mean, we can do that now, let's say this, this court, this code ordinance, it is on line. So if, um, I'm, I'm not sure how, there's a, there's a, what, what, whatever it is. And just be honest with you, I'm not so sure how...
I can go in and see if I can get a way we can put that in.
Yeah, like I say, it was reviewed and updated, I mean, I would say I don't know how much, how much of the effort it's gonna take on either of our parts.
I'll check it quick, see if it's...
So, yeah, so...
Brett sees it, file it, please.
And, and, um, we need to, we need to, yeah, um, I might go in and say that there, we can put a print suit, said it was re-reviewed this week, and uploaded again on this date, so that it's...
I'm, I'm, I'm out with that, if she can figure out how to do that on the website. Because that's where everybody wants to look at this, is gonna go to this website, look at it, so... But, yeah, I, I don't mind.
Well, my thing is, I just want the folks that think we're still working on policies, they're twenty, twenty years old, and they know the law's changed, everything else has changed, they're maybe saying it's, they really don't care, because they've done it since two thousand five.
Do you let me re-upload it, and say that we reviewed on this page, and I'll get all the...
Even if you put it in the title, you know, somewhere, everybody will title it, just to say, well, the view is good, you know?
Alright, so, the next, uh, with regard to Vannan Road, uh, last time, we talked about Morris Road and Pine Grove. Um, I talked to Kathy at the tax assessor's office. She says that it's, that she will be the one, she'll handle taking those roads, which were previously not taxed, and putting them back on the land dollars. Uh, I'm just gonna send her a copy of everything that, with maps. Uh, the only thing I want to point out to y'all, though, is this will not take place till next year. This year, everything's already out, so she'll handle that, so we'll be good. Those, those roads will become property of the, uh, of the landowners. And I asked her, I said, how you gonna divide it? And so if, if a landowner owns both sides, then I, I think she would just add it to that one. But if there's one on one side and one on the other, she said, you know, half the road we go to one, half the road we go to the other, and then if the landowners disagree about that, then they would go up and talk to her and provide proof. It's not, I don't really feel like it's our job, but at that point in time, to do their dispute about between landowners. So anyway, that's gonna be taken care of. We've already talked about the D N R lease. With Valley Road and Leslie Lo, Leslie Road, I just kinda did a cursory investigation into that, and from, you know, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but, uh, because for most tax assessor websites, sometimes there are some errors, but at least it appears that with regard to Leslie Road, nobody's getting taxed for that road. Uh, you know, it's not part of the parcels that are on that road, so it's pretty good indication that, that it is, uh, considered county property, and I did at least pull one of the deeds, and the legal description of the deed indicates that the property line goes to the easement, and then goes over, so people are getting deeds, uh, up to the road, not including the road. So it appears to me that y'all at least have, um, easement ownership of Leslie Road. Now, what y'all wanna do with that at that point, y'all are gonna go ahead and start maintaining, whatever you wanna do, uh, at least it appears to be that, that y'all do have. And I think that's what Rick, your man, or somebody had said, that you thought was truth anyways last time. So it does appear to be the case. However, with regard to Valley Lane, um, it doesn't appear to be that way, uh, at least on the tax map. Again, that doesn't necessarily mean everything, and I did not get the opportunity to pull deep, but based on what I look at here, it, it appears that, uh, that that is still property that's owned by whoever these landowners are. So I, I'm not sure who gets it, but it's split up in a bunch of different landowners, so... Valley Road.
Yeah, we probably sent them, or you told me you didn't want them.
I just forgot the copy you...
Okay, well, that's...
Couple of days ago, after...
Alright, yeah, and I, I was, I was just thinking, say, that, that's gonna be a big endeavor, so...
There's two of them, two of the government...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's a...
He gotta notice some of them, I'll win one either one of them, they went in the soccer pond in a few weeks before.
I, I was, that was gonna be my recommendation, so I believe we're right there.
Oh, it's two roads, Valley and Highland.
And I'll forge that, even though it's, it's fascinating, I'm sorry.
I see.
So what, how about, uh, Leslie? Y'all didn't even wanna talk about that, or look at it?
Is it pleaded thus? I mean, has anybody seen a deed?
Well, again, it, it appears to be, and there, there are multiple people on that road as well, but at least it appears to be that way. Now, I can go do title searches on, I mean, count how many, I mean, you're talking about...
Are they supposed to be... Yeah, so I think it's kinda ready, probably.
What do you say if we were to... If we try a lot of, uh, help us on that truck, that's right.
You don't rock it?
I hope you don't see it.
I done looked at, I, I looked at it on the county map, it says we own it, it just there's a gun.
We own it, make another question.
And I can go back and go even further...
Since, since two thousand and six.
And, and look even further, but it does appear to be that y'all, hey, there's nobody paying taxes on that road.
Right.
So, and again, that's not the guarantee that he can go on it. So why don't I do this, I'll go back and pull and see if I can actually see a deed or a file. Because, you know, some of these roads, you, you never necessarily got a road, you just got an easement over the years, we went in and maintained it. Um, and then when people sold property, they didn't actually, they sold it, not excluding the road, so... If you, you at least got an easement, whether or not you actually own, fee simple tiles of the road, or just have an easement to it, I, I think you at least have rights to...
They're not paying taxes on it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a pretty good indicator. If you want me to dive deeper, I mean, I've come here and spent some time on the deed records, to see if I can locate the actual, if there was an easement, but I would anticipate that if you went back and pulled the back title on all those roads that surround that, there's probably gonna be an easement, where each one of the landowners gave an easement, and I can, that's just gonna take some time to dig into that and find that specifically, if you want that, before you choose to go further. Is that, is that road...
I think our policy, we don't have to.
Is y'all's, have y'all been maintaining that road? Has there ever been any time that the county has maintained that road?
Yes, yes.
And how long ago was that?
Uh, a long time.
So y'all have not been recently maintaining that?
That's one of them, dead road.
Yeah, fif, probably fifteen years, that, that's my say, oh, six, or something.
That's one that was dated to us, yeah, oh, five or six.
And oh, nine was when it... So, I mean, at this point in time, we even need to aid abandonment, if we're not gonna do it, or... We are gonna do it, and I'll dive further and...
Yeah, I mean, we would do it, I mean, we've already filled the road at one time, we just wanna make sure...
It go up, do it go all the way through it?
All the way through it, yeah.
It come out all the way.
And what about the gate?
It comes out like pile and whatever.
Ray King, old J and K that got rid of down like that.
Yeah, that's what it comes out.
Do we know who put the gate up? And if so, we need, I mean...
There's no gate there.
So it's the gate down?
There's nothing there.
Okay, okay.
It's all cleaned up.
It's all cleaned up. But that's recent.
It's all cleaned up. Now, if you wanna go look, go out and look.
No, I'm in.
It's all cleaned up.
Okay, so...
So it's ready to be scraped?
Oh, it's ready to scrape, pull the ditches.
Have we been in the pipe for the red?
They gonna pay...
Church and, and the, and the accomplice home, and guys are...
Oh, so they're gonna pay over all that, too?
Yeah.
Now, still, you wanna...
I know it's all...
Okay, alright, well, I'll go dig deeper into title and pull deeds, see...
How, how the deed looked for that brand, I'm just asking a question. I mean, they ain't, nobody paid their taxes off since two thousand and six.
If a road, if a road belongs to a county, it is deeded to the county. If there's no deed, it don't belong to us.
So, so all these other roads, they, they're the road we're scraping.
If they're not deeded, they don't belong to us.
Well, you can...
I don't believe they are, I, I think you go look, if you gonna see that ain't deeded to us.
I'm maybe gonna leak out, is that, I don't know what we're doing.
There, there are certain roads that are, that are obtained by easement, meaning...
That's exactly right.
You just, the county went out there and started scraping them, and has an easement, because they've been doing it forever, but it doesn't necessarily mean you gonna find a deed.
That's right.
And it, but some of those are gonna be old roads that is...
Is there any houses down there?
Yes.
Yeah, there, there's, there's, uh, it's, it's subdivided all, I mean, really, a bunch of lots, all of them that road. But I don't, but you know what, though, it doesn't appear, just from the overhead map, it doesn't appear to be any houses, is...
There's, there's, they just, they just put another one in there recently, and they were one in there, and then the church in the, in the accomplice home, or whatever.
It looks like somebody, maybe, somebody looks like they subdivided it up, read it to them, to different people, is what it looks like, but, because it looks like it was subdivided up to still different people, so... So, as far as assuming...
The question is, is the county's road, it don't matter what people doing around it.
I understand if the county goes up there, if the county goes up there at any point in time and starts maintaining it, then, then they, they're gonna keep maintaining it.
That's right.
Uh, until we abandon it. So that's why I said, at this point in time, we, if we maintained it before, and it appears that it...
We have maintained it before.
Then we, at this point in time, we either got to abandon it officially, uh, or we can go back and start maintaining it again.
We, we don't wanna ban it, I just prefer, where I was, it all was, was not off. But we want it to be open.
I'll go, I'll go dig deeper and just, just make you feel better about it, and see if I can find the easements and the deeds and everything, I, I would assume it's in there, but just, just for one hundred percent certainty, I'll, I'll do that and shoot y'all all the email of what I find, but then, in that case, readily me coming back, if I shoot y'all all that everybody's comfortable with, then, then do we just tell the road department?
Start or...
Okay.
That, that was our suggestion, probably.
Okay. Alright, alright, and then, because the policy we already talked about, that's all I have, um, in this one time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Is any new road ready?
Just a reminder of what the chief said, the L A train and grill on, at the fire station, the train room, August twelfth, that's Thursday, at five thirty. And you told me you want we'll be out town.
Alright, yeah. Uh, next time, those public comments, I don't have a sheet, so I guess we're done. Executive session, if needed, and we didn't need to do an executive session, I would need a motion to go in executive session.
I'll make a motion. I'll say...
A motion by Van, a second by Rick, is in discussion.
We need to carry this as well, as a...
All vote, raise your right hand.
All.
Motion carried.
Just there closer to the highway, so we can make a name.
Hello, I need a motion to come out of executive session, I make a motion?
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Vance and a second by Rick is in discussion. Everybody raise your right hand. Here, we're back in regular session.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve a prime slash hazard pay, uh, according to which fund that comes out, to pay to the employees for, employees that we deem eligible through the COVID relief funds and.
American Rescue.
American Rescue, yeah.
I made a motion.
A motion for Rick.
Actually, second, I made a second.
No, I mean, Rick, a motion.
Second.
Yes. Got a motion from Hank and second for Rick is in discussion. And then I'll call for both, everybody raise your right hand, motion carried. That is it, eh? Just making this adjourned. You know your glove every minute, so.